At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the LaPorte County Commission to order. First order of business is the call to order and the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cora.
Present.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
Commissioner Mrazynski. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we'd like to consider the agenda and any additions or deletions.
Madam President, I'd like to remove one item from the agenda, and that's item 9B. And I'd like to add the following items. Number one, consider a boundary survey for the county home and adjacent 5.39 acres. That will go under new business as 11E. And then for 11B, in addition to what is being considered, two other items are being added. One is to consider the right-of-way grant approval for 150 North and bid award on 1,000 North. And the third item is, and the new business item F, is EMA week proclamation. With that, with those changes, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
So we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I would second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda has been amended, as indicated. Next, we'd like to consider the approval of the February 5th, 2020 minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I would second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved. Consideration of claims, Madam Auditor.
This week, we have payroll ending February 14th, 2020, in the amount of $1,224,785.38, and miscellaneous claims in the amount of $2,182,381.94.
I make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
I would support that and make sure that the public knows that the commissioners receive a copy of the claims electronically prior to the meeting so that we have time to review them and ask any questions. So that has been done. And with that, I would second it. And let's have a motion to approve. And as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the motion to approve the claims has been passed. I'd like, next on the agenda is public comment. There's a lot of people here this evening, so I wanted to review public comment very quickly. If you are here to speak on something that's on the agenda, for example, under number 10, old business, there's a first reading on the proposed pawn shop scrap metal ordinance. You can save your public comments for that time on the agenda. If you have general public comments, you're here to talk about an event, or you want to make a comment about something, this would be the time to do that. If you want to speak to something that's later on the agenda, you can hold your comments. Under old business, we have some comments to be made by Chris Burke Engineering on Met of U.S. States. So at that time, if you have comments on Met of U.S. States, we'll listen to those and accept those comments at that time. So also, we reviewed at our last meeting some of our code of ethics around public comment, and that's generally around civility. We want to be civil and respectful of each other. And if you have complaints about a public employee, there's a process for that, and this isn't the place for that to happen. So with that, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak at this time?
Yes.
Yes, this is time.
My name is Alina Yersaida. Do I need to state where I live?
Yes, please.
I live at 125 East Harrison Street in Michigan City. My initial reasoning for coming to you today is that I'm asking help with my property located at 4 Southwest Field Avenue in LaPorte. It's the Stillwell area. From the purchase date of the property, we've had many battles. May I bring these up to you? We initially found out that the place that we bought was owned by a hoarder, which that made us gut the place after talking with Terminex and NIPSCO. They had dealings with the property. NIPSCO had refused to go in at one point. We approached the highway department about putting a curb because as we were gutting the place, we found out that water was coming into the sill plates. We showed up one day, and the curb was there, and the water's being funneled, as you can see from the pictures, to my septic tanks. We've not reached an agreement. We've kind of let it go. And after that, we had a break-in at the property. We ate the cost of that. Tools were stolen. Materials were stolen. Which brings me to my present day situation. We went and applied for a building permit, and at the time, through idle conversation, I said that I had a Connex on the property. And I was told that I was in violation. I went and said, well, what can I do? I don't want to be in violation. I've adhered to everything concerning the property thus far. I didn't want to get in trouble. I was told to file for a variance. At the time that we were supposed to have our meeting, my mom disappeared. She's mentally ill, and we had to go look for her. So I missed the meeting. The very next day, when the inspector's office opened, I was there first thing, and I was told that there was nothing I could do. I've been back and forth with the inspector's office and also with the drainage board because at the time that I filed for the variance, I said, well, if we could keep the building, I'd like to keep the building and put it where our shed is and knock down the shed. Because during the time that the drainage board did work, one of the contractors hired a contractor that damaged the shed. So we just thought we would knock it down and put the storage container there and side it and put a roof on it. As you can see from the pictures, we've steadily improved the property. We've dug massive garbage holes out, removed garbage. We have resized it, put new floor joists, everything that you can. We've repaired foundations, all by being inspected and okayed by the inspector's office. I do not believe, and there's the copy of the ordinance with the sheet that I gave you explaining my problems, I did not believe that I was in violation. And so I'm asking for help in facilitating talks because we initially didn't want the container there forever. We just said that if we could have it there forever, it would be a possibility. When I went to the drainage board meeting, the drainage board at first was not wanting me to leave a fence or the building there, but since then, they said it's okay to leave the fence and the building, the shed in particular, and the easement. And so I'm just really looking for help because there's a police report there now. My property has been broke into a third time. They've taken my tools and materials for a third time. That was the whole purpose of us getting the Connex. And if we don't have a Connex, the stuff is in the house, and the house continuously gets broken into. I do have insurance on the property, but as you know, if you carry a vacancy policy, they will drop you if you claim anything. A vacancy policy is hard to get. And so I'm just looking for help to maybe better communicate my needs to the zoning board and relook at the issue. I think there was a miscommunication with all of it.
So I'm seeing that you have a letter from the Building Commissioner dated January 31st. This explains what she would like you to have done. Have you had a conversation with her? I guess I'm a little confused.
Yes, ma'am. I have had a conversation with her, but she is on one page and I'm on another. There seems to be a lot of people talking in the boards, and so when I go to talk with her, I'm kind of met with a brick wall. I'm not trying to badmouth or say that they're not doing their job or anything like that. I just strictly think that it's miscommunication. I don't think that she understands that I wanted the building there temporary until we were done. I've tried. I've went up there crying. I've went up there pleading. It's a storage container. We know that it's unsightly, but again, I'm losing money constantly by storing these materials, and we're having to buy tools. This is our third round of buying tools. And this time, we had to have a generator because we only have half of the house with electricity, and so we're having to run a generator in the times that we don't have that electricity. So I don't know what to do.
Thank you, Mrs. Yersaida. I'd like to say we will take this under advisement. Before I do that, I guess I'd like to pass it to our attorney and just ask, is there any advice on facilitating some conversation?
Yes, there is a process by which if a homeowner is aggrieved by a decision of the Building Commissioner, you can appeal it to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I was told that, but then they told me that I only had a 15-day window after the 15 days, so I wasn't sure that I still had that option.
Yeah, you may want to consult with an attorney to assist in the appeal because they could then perfect the appeal to the BZA, and then you get your hearing in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals that could either uphold or overrule the decision of the Building Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You'd like your materials back?
Thank you. So do I need to say anything?
I would recommend it. I mean, it's not as if you can't file an appeal with the BZA without one, but it's helpful because of the processes involved and the state statutes and the interplay with the local ordinances. It's helpful to do, and with what you have at stake, it's probably going to be helpful to do that.
Do you recommend one? Because I've called 30 of them, and not one wants to take the case.
Well, there are just a few who do land use and property issues, and if you want to call my office, we can give you the names of three attorneys that do practice in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other members of the public wish to speak at this time? Last call. Any other members of the public wish to speak at this time? Thank you. We'll move on. Department head reports and department head comments.
Good evening. Bob Youngkong-Hayler.
Good evening.
Hi there.
I'm here tonight to bring you people into the loop with what transpired yesterday. I'd say about a week ago, we were made aware that the toll road, Goshen-LK District toll road, was having a big auction. And I called Joey and asked her how we would purchase things through an auction, and we worked it out, and the auctioneers were very cooperative and said that they would work with us. I put together a team from the county highway, Dwayne, Dwayne Warner, the assistant, and Steve Cox, garage foreman, Andrew Zimmermeyer, our bridge foreman, and Dusty Hicks are well-chopped, fabricated, good team, very knowledgeable about a lot of stuff. They went to the auction yesterday, and we were interested in a bunch of used snowplows, just the plow for the truck. Ours are kind of old, and you know, they get damaged and rust and stuff, so. Sent two guys over there one day last week to look at this equipment, and they took notes and wrote down numbers and got a list of plows that we thought we were interested in. So it's the first time we've ever done this, and didn't know how it was going to go. So I talked to Dwayne yesterday morning, just before they left to go over there, it was in the Goshen-LK area, and I said, now, look, don't be afraid to spend a little money if there's something else there that we're interested in. So they had like 40 trucks. So that being said, they come home with five trucks and 12 plows for $47,000. We kept it under the $50,000 cap. I'm just pretty proud of these guys. We've got a little presentation here of the trucks. We have them all. It's four single-axle freightliner trucks. They're 2007s, and one four-wheel-drive Oshkosh. If you're familiar with the Oshkosh, but it's a four-wheel-drive, heavy-duty recovery-type vehicle. Paid a little over $10,000 for that truck, and it's probably brand-new. It's a $250,000 piece. The other trucks, I think they average around $6,500, $7,000 a piece. The plows, they got for like $350 to $450, which are $8,000 to $9,000 plows. So I'm just really excited. I think they did quite well. And you're going to handle that.
A few questions, Mr. Young. So what was our, was our need, did we need the plows? Did we need the vehicles?
Yeah, we needed the plows.
I guess that's where there's a little...
We have a lot of them. We've had a few damaged over the past couple of years, and they're just, you know, they're expensive. They're expensive, and we fix them as far as we can, but then when they get to where they're just worn with rust and stuff, and there's nothing else to weld to, they have to be replaced.
And the usage hours on these vehicles that you acquired are better than the ones we had?
Yeah. They're, they average about 100,000 miles on all five trucks. It ranges from, I think, 90 to 130. They're freightliner trucks, the exception of the Oshkosh. They have Mercedes-Benz diesel motors in them. I think they're really good. And for $47,000, we got all that. These trucks are in better shape than some that we're using every day right now.
Great. Thank you.
Dan is projecting someone.
Did a little quick little video, and then that's the Oshkosh there, that big, heavy-duty one. They're similar to Oshkosh trucks. They're like cement mixer trucks. They're really good shape. Automatic transmissions, fully equipped. They have the liquid tanks for the ice melt.
Good.
They'll, something like that. There's a lot of trucks there, but we, it worked out so good because they're all running.
And they work!
We had two guys, Steve Cox, our garage foreman, and Andrew Zimmermeyer, the bridge foreman. They actually went ahead of the auctioneer. Dwayne was doing the bidding on the trucks. And these two guys went, they crawled underneath these trucks, inside them, checked the beds out, make sure they weren't rusted and rotted away, and they reported back to Dwayne and gave him comments on which ones they thought he should bid on. So Dwayne did a good job bidding on these. And then Dusty Hicks, he's our welder, he handled the plows because he repairs all our plows and knows all about them.
That's great.
So he handled that, and I just think it worked really well. We've got everything in our possession today except for four plows. We have to go back and get one more plow.
Mr. Young, I want to thank you and your team for trying to bring some good value for the county. Thank you.
Great job. So I guess a procedural question. I've been down there chatting with you and Dwayne about pre-icing, pre-spraying the roads with de-icer?
This is going to help us.
Okay. Because that was one of your issues, is that we didn't have the correct equipment.
I've got some literature on some tanks. They call them totes. Comes out of Wisconsin somewhere. And there's a spray bar that comes with this, and it's all remote control, so you can set this tank in the back of the truck. You mount this spray bar on the back of the truck, and it's all remote control with just a little fob, no internal wiring whatsoever. So I got that literature. I got some pricing on that. And what this is going to do with these trucks is going to loosen up some other trucks that we can equip that way.
Okay.
I think it's going to be like $10,000 per unit for the spray unit. I'm hoping we can maybe put like three of those together. But it's a 750-gallon tank, and this material that we put in the tank is 12 pounds per gallon. It's not hardly could, could you put that in a pickup truck?
Yeah.
Way too much. But these trucks are going to loosen up these other trucks, and they won't be on the road every day, you know, so we can use some of the older trucks for that. So it's not going to happen yet this winter, but hopefully we'll have it in place for next winter.
Okay. That's certainly a good goal.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I have one more thing. Community Crossing Project, 1000 North, if you're all familiar with that. 15-mile, over 15-mile project. There'll be a lot of milling come off of that, 30-some thousand tons. Designated four dumping sites, which you have to do for those millings to go to, and three of those are all the way back to town. 1000 North is, you know, just shy of the Michigan line. One of our dumping sites is Heston Steam Museum, if you're familiar with that. They can hold a lot. So we're going to put as much as we can in there, in their lot, and donate some to them. This is all with your approval. Let them take whatever they can use, and if we're in that area and we have a use for some on a dirt road or a shoulder project or whatever, then some will be available for us to use as too. It'll save all that hauling of that, all that material, a lot of material.
Right.
I think it's 32,000 tons, all the way back to town, all the way back to LaPorte. So I guess with your approval, we would, I don't know if they can hold all of it or not, but they can hold quite a bit. And then they can use some. And then Ted, the supervisor of the Steam Museum, would like to trade some for services, for an excavator that does work for them out there. He does a lot of it volunteer, and then this would save the museum money.
So are you saying the whole 32,000 tons would go out there?
I don't think there's room. We'd put what we could, could there.
Well, I'll take a legal opinion, but you just introduced a different twist that I hadn't heard. So he's then going to trade the taxpayers' millings for something else, and you're stepping into an area that I would say our lawyer needs to mention.
They're pretty much non-for-profit.
Yeah. I just, I just think we need to be cautious.
Well, and I think your caution is well-founded because, as you know, the millings are viewed as assets and...
Well, they, the road companies will buy them from cities or counties that don't use them. They use it for roadbeds, so it's a commodity.
Absolutely. And in the past, we've had written proposals for the use of millings. For instance, KIP, it was a written proposal to the commission, and then you had to provide a written decision on that at a meeting. So perhaps if Bob can forward kind of the proposal, and then we can discuss it with the auditor's office and the State Board of Accounts as well, and then make a recommendation to you.
Yeah.
We can, we'll do that.
Yeah, I think it's best to do it that way. Thank you.
I have Ted Rita here tonight. He's the curator of the museum, and he'd like to say a few words, if you don't mind.
Are you okay with that, Shaw?
Sure. I mean, they can make their proposal, and then we'll certainly have you take it under advisement and provide you an opinion then.
I think he just wants to let you know some of the things they do for the community that we may not know about.
Great.
I want to thank Bob for having me here. I don't know if any of you have ever been out to our museum, but we are 63-year-old, 64, this is our 64th season this year. I've been involved all my life since my dad brought me out to the grounds as a toddler. My dad was in, was also involved as a volunteer, and I got to be friends with the general manager. But since I've been in charge, we have come out of our club phase, and we've become an asset and a partner, and we think a good neighbor to the county. We support the Toys for Tots Marine Corps effort here in LaPorte County, and we're one of the largest donors of those Toys for Tots. Each and every year, we have a local elementary school. We take the entire school out. We have charge to the museum where we put on STEM learning exhibits, and some of these kids would probably never have an opportunity, as you well know, to come out and visit and have such a quality experience. And it's a, it's a great learning day for them. In addition to that, we work with groups like the Worthy Women's Group, where people that just need a little bit of help can bring their kids out with them and have a day of fun, have some food, and really regain some dignity in their life, and we support those causes as well. These millings will be very valuable to us. I represent, I am the only full-time person there, but I do represent about 150 volunteers that give up their time, like for instance, when we have to take off time to, they have to take vacation days to put on these field trip days and such. But they, they work all winter long, and as you can imagine, our budgets are very stretched, as well as yours. We know that. We have to be diligent and fiduciary with our budgets for our members. We have about 800 members that own the museum. We are a 501(c) not-for-profit, but these millings are going to go to complement your improvement of 1,000 North, where we can improve safety along that corridor because what we want to do is, as soon as these millings would be delivered, our contractor would be cutting in a new road for us to, so that we can stack up cars on our property, getting them off the county road as fast, quickly as possible, so that they, so we don't have congestion on the county road as our, as our crowds grow. So it is, it has been on our radar for quite some time, and we're hoping to begin that work this spring, and then have all of that work done so that we can increase safety together with you for spring of 2021.
Thank you.
So I do have these little literature books here that I'd love to give you guys so you can familiarize yourself.
Thank you for all the work you do, and if you can send the proposal, then we can see what is legal, and then we can...
And I should note, too. I mean, as the commission's aware, as you've just observed, Dr., I mean, Heston Steam Museum's done great work, and they've been a wonderful, you know, destination for a lot of folks coming to the community. We'll do whatever we can to try to get an opinion so that we can get some sort of a recommendation to the commissioners, okay, to allow that. But if you can get me a letter, specific volumes, the intended uses, that'll help as I, as I go ahead and vet it through the process.
I sure can. I'll work with Bob for that. Thank you very much for those comments, and I'll pass them along to our volunteers.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you're definitely one of our county treasures. Lots of families count on the, count on the museum. So thank you so much. Any other department heads wish to speak at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam President, Commissioner Cora. Tony Rodriguez, your Director of Community and Economic Development, would like to just, in a very brief fashion, highlight the proposed 2020 Community and Economic Development Department budget, which will be, with your approval, be presented to the county council at their next regularly scheduled council meeting. It, I believe, was circulated before you this evening. One of the critical highlights is that the total ask or budget amount is identical to the 2019 budget amount, and what I would like to do is just very quickly run through the 2020 county priorities of the department. As you know, this is a very exciting time. We've been meeting on a very regular basis with our super-users and our contractor, which is targeting the date of March 4th as a proposed unveiling date for the county's brand-new and highly polished website. The reason it's not a firm date as of yet, we're allowing for a final review of the super-users and gathering their final input, as well as working very closely with the Information Technology Department, Darlene and her contractor that's assisting in the, on the technical side of the launch of the website. One of the key components of this year's efforts, obviously, is to continue the tremendous hard work of the LaPorte County's Broadband Task Force, focusing the energy. We're currently very active right now in seeking financial assistance to conduct a very directed feasibility study for deployment of additional broadband access to the LaPorte County unserved areas. One of the initiatives that has been, I know, near, very near and dear to Commissioner Cora's heart, and that's the completing the county's comprehensive county-wide housing market analysis. We're working very closely with a core group of industry experts right now that will further review later this week, further review and define the scope of services, so that we can then identify a very firm and comprehensive budget estimate. The intention is for us... The intention is for us to be a partner in the funding of that, not to fully fund, but to be a catalyst and to bring the partners together. But the key component is that it's being done in conjunction with Michigan City, with the city of La Porte, and all the outlying communities as well. So very exciting time. An aggressive continuation of the business retention expansion visitation program of three, not less than three manufacturers each month. This is a new and exciting system that we will be very actively working, and working very closely with Purdue University on, and that's the development of a virtual reality site selection tool. We'll be doing that in a method using the latest technology, so that a site selector would virtually be able to be walked through a site selection visit, both on their computer and over the phone, and in some cases with the assistance of an additional tool that would be developed in-house. So we're very excited about that, bringing that, that technology to our business of site selection in conjunction with the Zoom Prospector tool that the state utilizes. We are a very active participant in the vibrant communities study and initiative being done, being funded by the Unity Foundation and the La Porte County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and that very large group of volunteers is very quickly moving towards their implementation phase, or excuse me, the, further defining the objectives, and we are actively participating in that, in that process. So we will continue to be a very active participant. And then save the best for last, and that is launching the branding campaign for La Port County, identifying La Porte County as the place to live, capturing a lot of the eyeballs that, that travel eastwardly on both of our major thoroughfares, I-94 and I-80. We hope to have a fully endorsed and well-vetted optimal message that we will place on a billboard this, in the year 2020. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention very quickly that, I may have mentioned that we have two private grant applicants aggressively pursuing state funding to further deploy broadband, that is Acme Communications and also Comcast, the company that are the largest single providers serving a direct feed fiber-to-the-home system, and they are aggressively, the good news is, they've issued their letter of intent, and they've been invited to formally apply. So they're working on their grant applications as we speak, and we will be meeting with several of the companies that are in the service provider business, in hopes to communicate with them, should they have any kind of remonstrance or concern about their, the competitiveness of the, these areas that are being identified as unserved currently. So last but not least, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention and compliment the tremendous work of the La Porte County Redevelopment Commission, and I know Commissioner Cora, your intervention with the Commissioner Schellinger from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, but securing the $1 million infrastructure grant that will help make that CSX connection to the Kingsbury Industrial Park is just an integral part of our marketing efforts and our ability to have a first-class industrial offering that we believe is going to be just much more simply marketed and sitting in the, really, the catbird seat of prime real estate for heavy industrial development. So I'd love to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you. I think these priorities are right in line with what we have been talking about, and look forward to the accomplishment of these goals. Thank you.
So, Mr. Rodriguez, you mentioned that you wanted to present your budget to the, to the county council. Do you need a motion from this body to progress, to present it, or?
The endorsement is always helpful, but this is part of the twice-yearly effort by the Office of Economic Development to secure budget approval, so certainly having the support from the commission is helpful, I think.
Madam President, I make a motion to endorse this budget that has been presented and forwarded to the county council.
I would support that, Dr. Cora. All those in favor of the motion to approve the budget as presented by the Office of Community and Economic Development, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much.
And please proceed, and keep us posted if you need any other support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other department heads who'd like to speak at this time? Hearing done, let's move on to requests. We have a travel request from Prosecutor Lake.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Dr. Cora. I'm here on behalf of the 4D team, requesting for permission to travel. And what this is, is that basically, we have, as you know, 4D incentive funds that accumulate that the federal government gives to us based on the performance of 4D, and that's what would be, and that is to be used for training and other, you know, those are very hard to use up. And so when I first came into office, one of the, one of the main things that I always wanted to do, I really believe firmly in investing in my team and the people who work for me, to support them as much as possible. And so in the past, we've only sent a few people to these national conferences and that. I wanted to increase that, because what I'm trying to get to, especially in one of the issues that came up just today in dealing with a new hire, Sarah was telling me about some different issues of the employees down there not knowing each other's jobs as well and trying to cross-train. And so part of that is trying to really increase the ability. There's going to be no out-of-pocket for this training, no matter how many people we send, and we've kind of reduced the number. We had requested up to nine people, but we've reduced that down to six with the permission of the county, of the commissioners. But one of those issues that, there's no out-of-pocket, this all comes from those incentive funds that we get quarterly from the federal government, and it's all based on performance. And one of the main things that they always have is to use that money for training. And child support is in, Mr. Friedman is well aware, he worked in the child support division for 10 years. It's a world unto itself, and you get into these interjurisdictional issues, you get in, so it's really kind of important that we have people go to these national, and I just wanted to try and increase the amount of training that my people get on an annual basis. So with your permission...
So 4D is child support, just the public, the public is listening to this, so they might not know.
Exactly.
And the other important point you made is that it is not coming from La Porte County taxpayers, it's from the federal government.
Right.
Which is basically, our tax dollars coming back to La Porte County for training.
Exactly. And a lot of the money that comes that we're using in the budget for the 4D office child support comes from incentive funds that we get back, and the clerk's office gets some, we get a large majority of them, but they go into an incentive fund that, you know, at some point, they accumulate, we have to use them otherwise, and it's very hard. We're going to try and use some of them on the construction of, to whatever they allow, and they're very, very restrictive. This comes under the federal government, and you've got to go through a lot of hoops to get to be able to use this money. But one of the things that, that we don't have restrictions on, I, actually, I can, out of this, I don't even need an appropriation, I don't even need a permission to spend these funds.
Right.
On behalf, as long as it's within the CFR. I do this as a courtesy, so that everyone knows what we're trying to do, and then we're not just trying to, you know, use the funds. But they've been accumulating for so many years, that we're almost to $600,000 in this fund, and so we're trying to use that and use it a little bit, and use it in a way that would be helpful. Because I just, I found out one of the issues that we've had, some backlog in filing new cases, because one of the employees has not been, has been taking some time off, and so no one else knows how to do that, and I'm like, well, we should be cross-training.
Cross-training.
And so this is kind of a, an idea of, hey, let's get more, as much training as you can get for people, so they can understand other people's jobs, that they learn something, and they can do it when other people aren't there, so.
Sounds like a good plan. Professional development is always a good thing.
Madam President, I echo what you said. I think investing in people to make them more efficient and more effective is always a good thing, so I make a motion to approve this.
I would support that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Prosecutor Lake. Next on the agenda is the Community Events Promotion Fund, for $500 each, to the Hannafest, to the Birchfield Memorial Foundation, American Legion Post 403, and La Porte County Draft Horse Association from the La Porte County Convention and Visitors Bureau's fund, which is specifically for events promotion. I'd consider a motion to approve.
Before I make that motion, Madam President, Dan, do we have money in that fund to make this? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve all four requests.
We have a motion to approve. I would support that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion has been passed for the $500 to the events that I listed. So under, next on the agenda is old business.
Madam President, if you could consider switching 10A and 10B, only because with the added part of the agenda, you're not only going to open the bids tonight, but award the bids, and so to give the department head sufficient time to review those bids, if we could go ahead, do the bid opening now, let them go next door with the submitting bidders, and then come back with a recommendation later, that would be helpful.
All right. Next on the agenda, then, we're going to reverse order. Sorry, officers. I was trying to move it quickly, but it didn't work. We're going to consider the bid opening for the 1,000 North Community Crossings Pavement Project. Mitch Bishop, county planner, will present.
Okay, so there are two submissions for this particular project. Because of some time periods involved, some tight constraints, we went ahead and built both the bid opening and the contract award into the agenda tonight. This gives the opportunity to Mr. Bishop, Mr. Young, and to our county engineer to go ahead and take the bids next door, and then be able to bring a recommendation later in the meeting. We've just opened the two bids on this particular project. We have a bid first from Reece Riley, which is timely received, and a total construction cost on this particular bid of $2,247,445.24, and a proposal as well by Walsh &amp; Kelly, the other bidder, for $2,475,490.91. And as the commission is aware, there are other documents that have to be included, including performance bid documents and everything else, and so before they come back to you with a recommendation, they need to make sure that the bid package is responsive and responsible, and that everything is included beside the base numbers. So with that, I'd like to have the commission show the bids as received and given to the department heads for a recommendation.
I make a motion that bids have been received, and we'll forward it to the department head for their recommendation.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, then, oh, sorry, we have a, I'll support that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. A motion has been approved to accept the bids and then examine them. Next on the agenda is consider proposed pawn shop scrap metal ordinance on first reading. Detectives Pat Cicero, James Lear, Adam Hanen, and Aaron Bannock from the La Porte County Sheriff's Department. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your patience.
Thank you, commissioners. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Pat Cicero, La Porte County Sheriff's Office. This is Detective Lear, Detective Bannock. If you recall, on September 23rd, it was the first time that we came to, the meeting was the council meeting, and we were seated in the audience, and we presented to you a presentation concerning an ordinance that was drafted by our detectives. It was the La Porte County Precious Metal Valued and Well Scrap Metal Pawn and Second-Hand Retailer Ordinance, as you've announced this is the second reading. And we also have a couple of items we'd like to share with you.
It's the first reading, yeah. Thank you.
We can't stress enough the value of what we're trying to accomplish in La Porte County in enacting this ordinance and utilizing a service called Leads Online, a service that we've been utilizing for years, and a organization that is nationwide and used by thousands of businesses throughout the nation. And we have had much success with Leads Online in tracking property which has been deemed stolen or part of a criminal, the various actions of others.
So, may I just interject, just to frame it for the public, some of the public may not remember what you talked about when you came before. So if you could frame the problem that we're trying to address, so kind of an overview, and then some of your strategies, including what you were just beginning to talk about.
I'm going to do my, our experts here...
Okay.
They'll tell us what's going on.
Thank you so much.
Well, as we stated before, one of the biggest issues in this county right now is that majority of our businesses don't report to Leads Online, and we're not utilizing the full capabilities of the software. The biggest issue we have is that, once we get these people on board, these businesses, we'd like to have accurate reporting, and we'd like to help mend the kind of bridge that's in between the businesses and us right now. Because right now, the current procedure is we obtain search warrants to recover stolen property, so we don't have to victimize our victims twice. However, that leaves the victims, sorry, the businesses, out there property. So the purpose of all this is to get them to a unified front, where the county, the sheriff's office, and the businesses are working together to restrict the flow of stolen property, properly document what property is being sold, and redistribute in this county, so we have an accurate idea of what's coming and going. The problem that we face right now is that it's not being reported at all, or it's being reported inaccurately. So this is just a measure to put in place, so we can be the beacon of the state and the most thorough, accurate, and, you know, service to our citizens as we can.
So ultimately, commissioners, is by enacting this ordinance, La Porte County will be on board with many other counties and ordinances that have been enacted throughout the state of Indiana. In fact, we have, would like to share with the commissioners some examples of how Leads Online operates, and we do have some examples of that to share with you. Some counties or areas that have this ordinance in place are Anderson, Evansville, Fort Wayne, Indianapolis, St. Joseph County, and Terre Haute are just examples that already have ordinances in place. The ordinance that we have drafted for our county is no different as far as verbiage than anything else that's already been created. And we think it's imperative that La Porte County also enact this, so we can be the leaders of this county, and also provide the other jurisdictions within this county a pathway to also enact this ordinance in their jurisdictions, again, for these retail shops, secondhand shops, pawn shops, etc.
So to summarize, the issue is that when people lose things, someone steals from them, so a crime has been committed, the items are taken to a pawn shop, and there's no tracking of the items, generally speaking. So we don't know what's there, what's stolen, what's not stolen, is that kind of a...
There is tracking, Commissioner, but what this allows is the organizations and businesses to report to a third party.
Okay.
And the information is secured with that third party, and it allows law enforcement to access that information, and it's something that we have been doing for years now. This would compel all the businesses within La Porte County to utilize this business, which is free of charge to all businesses. Again, associated with the pack that we give you to businesses, they would sign up free of charge, they'd also be provided with a nice sticker to put up at their point of sale to notify the customers that they, we do report to Leads Online. Hopefully, it will thwart any kind of individual trying to bring in stolen property, because we will be able to track it. And we have had so many success stories, commissioners, even tracking individuals who are leaving La Porte County, Indiana, and traveling all the way down to Florida, and pointing things, who are businesses, are complying with Leads, and we can actually track their movement, because they're pointing stolen items.
Great.
Or pointing anything with one, we track them. So this is a win-win situation for La Porte County, it's a win-win situation for us, being law enforcement, win-win situation for victims, and, you know, bringing people to justice.
Officer Cicero, how do, how does this Leads Online, how do they generate revenue? Who pays them?
We're going to bring up the prosecutor here. We actually, out of our infraction of FERL, we pay $15,000 a year for the law enforcement to be able to use this. And so not having, all this requires is them to do it and give the information and... And so, not having, all this requires is them to do it and give the information in an appropriate way. The information that's put in for like a piece of equipment, they got to give their, so we give their ID, whatever, that's all goes to Leads Online. It's not shared with anybody else, except with law enforcement. And so, it just helps support us with giving access to all of law enforcement agencies in Lapeur County to Leads Online, and then they're getting accurate leads. So, and what, the problem is criminals understand who's not using this and who is. And so, they'll come, they'll steal stuff from South Bend or another county, and come to a county that doesn't have it. And so, it's hit or miss. And so, all we're trying to do is protect not only the pawn shop owners and the people that they're scrapping, that they're getting accurate information from, because what happens is, if somebody goes into a pawn shop, and that's a stolen item, and they have the information, now they know who's taking it, but also, the situation is then, we can then, you know, because what happens is, who's going to pay? Because they paid money out, they want their money from the pawn shops, they're out money, and they become a victim themselves. And so, it helps us just get them remuneration, get their, get their money back as well, helps us prosecute the people who are committing the crimes, and also solve bigger crimes. I can just tell you that when we had a murder case, and items were stolen, and items were pawned, from that, the pawn shops that I got information from, from Porter County, became integral to my case of solving that murder, who committed the crime. So, it can be larger crimes than just burglaries or thefts or things of that either.
In counties that they use this, have they been successful in recovering?
Yeah, I think, I think wherever this is being used, you know, and all the counties that Pat mentioned are obviously your bigger counties. And, you know, you're dealing with, you know, Anderson, you're dealing with Indianapolis, Terre Haute, St. Joe County, all of them have these. And the idea is, for first, for, obviously, when we presented this back in September, the idea was first for the county to then adopt this, and then we're going to go around to the cities to seek that. We don't want to have a loophole, kind of like, you know, when you have these gentleman's clubs, they find out where they can go, and get a loophole, and hey, this one doesn't, it's not covered here. We're going to be able to try and cover the entire county, so that the same ordinance is in place everywhere, and that Leads Online. And it's, and as I said, we're fronting that, that from our infraction to FERL, to pay for the services, that's why it's being offered free to the companies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that you were meeting with some of the business owners when we last discussed this. Can anyone summarize that, and are there any business owners that want to speak at Thank you.
Madam President, Commissioner Cora Mark Schublock with the Law Firm of Ice Miller, representing the Institute for Scrap Recycling Industries. We are the metal recyclers. At the outset, I want to thank you for the opportunity to appear this evening. I've had previous conversations with your county attorney and law enforcement community, and would like the record to reflect, they're a very impressive bunch of individuals who served you well, outstanding professionals. I have sincerely enjoyed working with them, and they've been very accommodating. That said, my draft is a seven-page ordinance. I think yours is a little shorter, but my comments are combined, out of seven pages, only to two pages of language we had previously discussed. And if I'd have to summarize it, it boils down to how this information is collected, how your constituents personally identifying information is protected in the event of a security breach, and how this information is used. Is it only used for law enforcement purposes, or is it used or transmitted for some other purpose? I'd like to highlight, and it is not the relationship between Leads Online and the county that we're concerned about, it is the relationship between Leads Online and the reporting business. They require a check-the-box business participation agreement for us to report. And there's one provision in that check-the-box agreement, 4.9, I'll just read it to you briefly, summarizing it. Reporting business hereby grants to Leads a perpetual, irrevocable, unrestricted license to copy, distribute, reproduce, transmit data. And the reporting business hereby waives all rights and any claims against Leads for any infringements, proprietary rights, or rights of privacy. So, really, our concerns grow out of this provision, 4.9, of the use agreement. And we have some language, we don't come here tonight with objections solely, we have some language we could provide that may address these concerns. And then quickly, I'll finish, there may be one other gentleman who'd like to say a couple of words, he's traveled some distance. Section 4.1 of the proposed ordinance has a requirement that reporting businesses hold the property for 15 days. There's, I think, a bit of a distinction here with a scrap metal business and a pawn shop. And we would just urge you to think about omitting valuable metal dealers or scrappers under this provision. And the issue really boils down to, in some cases, there's simply just not enough real estate. We have truckloads of product coming in and out. So, that's something we'd like to work with you on. Also, in section 8.02, that, I think, is the violation section, under state law, the standard is knowing and intentional violation, that the reporting business is knowingly and intentionally disregarding this ordinance. We would submit that would be a standard you'd want to mirror here, since it exists in state law. I'm pleased to address any questions, if you have any for me now, but there's another gentleman here who'd like to say a few words.
Madam President, if I could, and we've had some good productive meetings, I know Mark has been up in my office, along with members of the Detective Bureau. One of the things we charged the Detective Bureau with early, as they came to us, was, let's not reinvent the wheel. Let's look at other counties, best practices, ordinances that are there, and there is nothing in the final version that's in front of you that is inconsistent with some of the other counties that have adopted. Now, I should say this, the detectives did accept several of the changes recommended by Mark and his clients.
Agreed.
And so, that's incorporated in the version, but there were a couple of areas. For instance, we tried to convey, the detectives can't, can't control how Leads Online conducts its business. I mean, this is the kind of standard practice, I mean, I think your beef, to some extent, is with Leads, in terms of the practices they have, and how they operate with other counties. And so, it's important to keep in mind, Leads is a third party for which the department accesses their database. And as we understand Leads' position, they will not amend their policies on how they operate or assume liability for anything. And I understand some of the concerns Mark and his clients have, but our problem is we can't represent Leads' position. I mean, this is how Leads contracts with other counties, businesses across the nation report to them without issue. We don't anticipate them changing any portion of their contract, because I think Mark's concern is about their contract. And, and I think his beef is with them. No other ordinance that we have researched observes verbiage similar to what you're proposing that we consider here, including Marion County. And so, you know, I think the concern of the Detective Bureau is, we can't tell Leads how to operate their business, and, and so, that was a concern there. We also removed the culpability language in 802, because counties shouldn't have to prove knowing or intentional conduct in a civil ordinance. But I appreciate them putting it forward as a concern. And what we did was provide the tentative final draft to you all for comment, and certainly welcome that, and told you, make sure and come here tonight so that you can offer any comment. But I'm trying to give some context for the commissioners as to why, when it comes to Leads Online and their, and their policies, it seems to be standard across the board.
This is not a debate. I'll just add two other footnotes, and then let this other gentleman speak. But I would simply suggest that the county is procuring this, they are paying some funds. And so, I think the county is in a position to leverage some changes in this use agreement, and Leads will appreciate that, appreciate your business. And I think a bit has evolved in terms of security and data security, since some of these other ordinances went into place in other parts of the state, so I just urge you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Both for listening tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Other members of the public?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Mervis. I'm from Carmel, Indiana. I'm here representing ISRI. I am not a lawyer.
What is ISRI?
ISRI. ISRI is the Institute of Scrap Recycling Industries.
Thank you.
It is iron, metal, paper, plastic, rubber. Specifically tonight, we're interested in metals. I'm not a lawyer, I'm a fourth generation scrap. I've had the opportunity to be appointed to the Illinois State Scrap Task Force. Similarly, I was lucky enough to be appointed to a, or asked to participate in, a similar task force for the state of Indiana. ISRI is a huge backer of best practices for everyone in our industry, whether it be best practices with respect to service, integrity, security, or the environment. Also, a huge proponent of the protection of both public and personal property. ISRI itself takes no position on online reporting. That's the industry standard. There are people who are in favor, there are those who are not. Our issue with this particular thing, as you pointed out, is less with the ordinance, and with the company, and the checkboxes that they have. It is important to understand that once the companies, and we've spoken with local companies who are present, once they upload their data, if that data is hacked, they are so responsible for that, even though it's not in their database, according to the Leads Online Terms of Service. It is curious that Leads has this perpetual right to this information. What do they intend to do with it if they need, if they need a perpetual right to the information, if it is only for law enforcement? This is not a checkbox, this is not a requirement of some of their competitors, like Business Watch International in the industry. Their competitor's BWI, BWI Rapid dot com, and I'm not affiliated with them. They do not have the similar requirements. It's this type of requirement that led to a massive lawsuit in the city of Oklahoma over that data protection. It is this type of concern that led to a change in what Georgia, the entire state, was doing with respect to data protection. It is unfortunate that companies that are, would be following the law and reporting online, could potentially be liable for a database, for a data breach, for a database they don't even control. You are the, you may be, well, currently you are using Leads Online. You're the customer. There's no reason why you can't inform this group that this data needs to be protected in this way. There are other cities who are using. We report to Leads Online at our facility in Terre Haute. I can tell you that we didn't understand this 12 years ago, when this ordinance was passed. No one understood the idea well, that information, like people's driver's license, homes, home addresses, anything else, could go into a database and be hacked. That allows, obviously, for someone to get very personal information. And the two companies who are present today would be online for, responsible for that, according to Leads' checkbox, their unwillingness to take responsibility for their own database. ISRI does not want to oppose this legislature. Again, we have no position on online reporting itself. ISRI would love to be an asset in developing really effective legislation. But the lack of protection of data is a grave concern. Now, I've focused on my comments, I'm sorry for throwing along, on protecting these people once they upload data from a hack. But I think we also have to understand that this data is effectively all of their book of business, all of their customers, all of their sales. And while no one has an issue with law enforcement having that, the verbiage in the Leads Online agreement that has to be signed by the companies that will input their data, says Leads owns all their customer lists, and that doesn't quite seem right. I would also add, aside from that, that for smaller businesses, a tag and hold, simply having to take two pounds of wire that you just bought, put it in a separate container, tag it, and hold it for 15 days, can be particularly onus. The amount of space that it takes, and, as we've seen recently, a simple cold in China, maybe not so simple, has devastated the copper markets lately. If you're buying material and you can't get it to market, and you're caught with that material sitting there, it can lead to, unfortunately, unexpected financial losses. Thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, what you're saying is you're not against the ordinance, but you're against using Leads Online, because you're concerned that the data is not protected by them? Is that the...
I, I think that's very close.
Okay.
What I would say is, ISRI has, ISRI would not be, is not against online reporting, takes no position. ISRI is not against Leads Online. It is that protection of the data. That's what led to the lawsuits in Georgia, that's what led to the lawsuits in the city of Omaha. It's protecting both the businesses, once they report, from having that come back on them, and saying, absolutely, law enforcement can have that data, but it should go nowhere else. For the life of me, you asked earlier, how do they make their money? They make it by subscription fees. But what else are they doing with this data, if they have the right to accumulate it, if they have the right to manipulate it? That's the concern.
And you're suggesting that there are other companies besides Leads Online who can provide this service without compromising the data?
I think that there are ways that Leads Online could do it without compromising the data, and there are absolutely other services that could do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You're raising what ifs, and what ifs. So, anytime Salesforce, for example, is CRM software system, they collect everyone's data, and we presume that they're keeping it safe. Verizon collects all your data, we presume they're keeping it safe. So, that concern is not unique to this issue. Do you have any proof that there's been data breaches?
I think the difference that we're talking about in this, is that Salesforce, other groups do take your data. But what you're asking in this case is for a business, and we have two here, Spectrum and Scrappy's, is for a business to provide that data into this database. And yet, because they will have provided that data into the database, they're still responsible if that database is hacked. When you talk about the target breach that occurred, the Experian breach that occurred, those companies were getting the data themselves, and they were responsible once the hack occurred. In this case, this ordinance would require these groups to upload data, and yet still hold them responsible if a third-party database is hacked. They have no control over that third-party database, they were Target, they worked Experian, they're not controlling the database, yet they're still responsible if something is hacked.
If I could interject, I'll to address your question, I believe there was a municipality that was hacked, that you shared with me, is that correct?
That was some, that wasn't mine, sorry.
I will try to get that information to you. I believe, and I'll have to check my file, that the breach occurred on a municipality side? So, once that information was reported to the government, the government system wasn't up to a certain standard, and that was breached.
Madam President, one of the questions I would have of ISRI, with the understandable concerns about hacking for owners, has ISRI approached the legislature to attempt to get immunity for owners in the event of a data breach? It would seem to me a universal solution statewide would be better than doing a ordinance-by-ordinance attack, jurisdiction-by-jurisdiction.
We certainly are having those conversations, pending. Some of that has been blocked, frankly, so we'll keep trying.
I mean, the commission's got limited leverage over this particular company, though. I know you're arguing that in order to enter a contract with them, maybe there's some language, but it would seem to me a statewide solution through the association, through legislative relief, would seem to be at least a productive route to go.
Unless the contract has already been signed, and we are already, already in that position. The other alternative would be to find another provider, and there are other providers out there. I just, for the life of me, can't... I just feel like we can't figure out why they need to own the data and why they would not protect good companies who have in good faith uploaded the data.
Absolutely. Has there been a specific bill drafted that you entered into the hopper and tried to get a hearing on?
We have discussed legislation in the past, and that has not been acted on. But I guess I don't want to take more of the commissioner's time, but I just want to simply say we are here to work with you. I want to restate the fact that you have outstanding group of professionals here, a very fine attorney, a very excellent group of law enforcement officers. I want to thank all of them for being very accommodating. And what is left is, again, a very small portion, but it's a significant portion. And as this moves forward, we'd like to work with you and have more conversations to see if we can address it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our goal is, again, to protect public or private property, and use our experience to help avoid unintended consequences. I think that would be probably what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So this is, the ordinance is on first reading this evening. I would mention that in the information sheet that the detectives shared with us, it talks about the data being encrypted and that the data center has been audited and has passed the SAS 70 Type II security audit. So obviously, the data protection is critical to this company, and probably all of their competitors follow the same protocol.
Yes, Madam President, and that's why I wanted to reapproach, is this is provided by Leeds Online. And I'll be the first to admit, we have a wonderful working relationship with Leeds Online. We've been a longtime customer. They have been more than happy. The source material for this ordinance, we obtained it from Leeds Online. They were more than happy to say, hey, here are the ordinances we found in the state. They did the legwork for us. They've sent us all the ordinances that they had in the state. They are the industry leader. And you can see it in here, this is, the concerns proposed tonight are addressed in this FAQ.
Yeah, I saw that.
The most important thing is, yes, this is law enforcement information only. The encryption, the encryption is key. And that's SAS 70 Type II security audit. That's, I'm not a, you know, electrical engineer, I'm sorry. I can't tell you how great that is. But, you know, it's obviously, it's CEGIS compliance. CEGIS is the federal standard for how we report and how we keep things safe. So the federal government believes in Leeds Online. The city of Indianapolis believes in Leeds Online, and I think Lepore County should believe in Leeds Online. This service is the nationwide premier service. I've never even heard of these competitors. I'm sure that the service is great. I humbly respect the security concerns, especially for our businesses in Lepore County, because that's why I wrote, and Detective Vanek and I wrote this ordinance, is to protect our businesses in Lepore County.
So one of the FAQs says, who sees my data? Can others, my competitors see it? And it says, only authorized law enforcement officials investigating crimes have access to the data on the Leeds Online system. This means that no one else can see your company's information, and you can't see anyone else's data either. You can only see the transactions you have sent us, and you can only do so via your transaction monitor screen. So it looks like they are addressing some of these probably common concerns as communities try to make the best choice for their community. So this is on the first reading, so we will be, in order to make sure that we have the ability to hear any more input, we'll be at our next meeting, we'll look at it, and second reading, and consider adoption at that time.
Thank you.
So thank you so much, unless you have something further to share.
Madam President, I make motion to approve this on first reading with the stipulation that we take the input that we received this evening and see if there's anything we need to do to make sure that the data is protected and incorporate those things into our next iteration.
If there's any language that can be provided that has been used in other jurisdictions to leverage Leeds Online to give additional protection, I'm certainly willing to look at it. I don't think we can do that through the ordinance. I think the ordinance is good as is, but I'm certainly willing to look at that and...
Yeah, and I've got a bill that I just received, over 15 grand, so I can use that a little bit of luck on that.
Please do.
To say, because I understand what they're saying.
Yes, I do too.
But there's only so much we can do. But I'll take a look at it, see if there's some language out there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to pass this on to second reading. I would support that. All those in favor of passing this on for second reading at our next meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved. And next on the agenda is the report by Christopher Burke Engineering regarding the Metaview Estates. And it's a request, requesting permission of the commission to approach the council regarding geotech surveys and well monitoring. Christopher Burke, Engineering.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to appear before you and provide a summary and recommend the next steps for the Metaview Estates subdivision groundwater analysis. We presented, submitted a two-page letter, kind of summarizing the findings on page one. We identified in the various bullet items, some of the documents the county provided to us that we looked at, and we also included in there the last bullet item, preparation of a Metaview Estates sump pump operation tracking spreadsheet. And we'll come back to that if we go through the memo. In the summary review of findings, we note that information provided by the residents indicates up to 42 different homes in mostly the southern part of the subdivision experienced excessive groundwater pumping in some capacity. So it's therefore a problem not just to isolate a few lots. So it's a pretty substantial problem across the southern half of the subdivision. We also looked at five conceptual drainage alternatives that were presented to us from the county. And while they all appear feasible, we don't have engineering calculations that could help determine cost effectiveness and efficiency of some of these options. So on page two, we've included our recommendations on how we can move forward. These recommendations involve two items. First one, engaging a geotechnical engineer consultant to install groundwater monitoring wells at strategic locations throughout the subdivision. In our initial discussions with geotech company, we'd be looking at four monitoring wells in the southern half of Metaview Estates and a fifth well in the northern section as a reference well to compare those results. And then also, we're looking at engaging a groundwater modeling consultant that can utilize that groundwater level data to develop either conceptual analytical geotechnical model or go into more detailed aquifer simulation models such as the USGS Mod Flow Program to assess the groundwater flow through the area of interest. In the bullet points, then, we've identified, in working with our recommended consultants, we've come up with not exceed costs to provide these services. For a geotechnical consultant to do the well monitoring, that would be a not exceed cost of $11,000. Working with our groundwater modeling consultant, Mondell and Associates from Indianapolis, the cost for that evaluation would be not exceed cost of $17,000. So all combined for doing the well points and then also the modeling, we'd be looking at not exceed cost of $28,000. If we're able to get some positive feedback from the commissioners tonight, we'd be looking at going before the county council to try and get appropriations approval from the council. And I'd like to share with you some of the work that the residents have done. We prepared some monitoring logs, and you can see the details in the work that all the residents have done. Every day, they've been tracking if their sump pump has been operating. How long it's been operating and cycle time. And it's pretty stark, some of those logs. You can see when...
Every two minutes.
We've had 11 residents agree to do monitoring in the neighborhoods, so that's roughly 25% of the homes that are experiencing problems. And in the summary sheet I passed out that has the blue lines and the red circles, when we started this program in mid-November, of the 11 homes, three houses were pumping continuously. And as you can see, the blue line, as we traverse from left to right, increases in the blue line indicates rainfall events. In the middle of December, we had a rainfall event about a quarter inch, and two additional homes started pumping. And then we had a significant rain event in January, three inches over 24 hours. At that point, all 11 homes in the study were pumping continuously. And that's what we're trying to get to with the proposal to do groundwater monitoring wells in a groundwater model system. If you look from middle of January through now, all 11 homes are pumping continuously without stopping. And based on the rainfall, we've had very little precipitation in that timeframe. So the purpose of the study would see what would be the volume of groundwater we would have to convey away from the subdivision to be able to get low enough where these homes could stop pumping with their sump pumps. So we have pretty good data to start with historically. We did receive data from Lepore County Airport. They've been tracking groundwater at the airport going back over 10 years. However, the airport itself is at elevation 800, and the subdivision is, in Metaview Estates, is 775. So there's a 25-foot elevation difference between the airport and Metaview Estates, and it's also about a mile and a quarter distance-wise. So while it provides a good reference point to us, it doesn't necessarily give us the data we need locally on how to solve the problem at Metaview Estates. So going forward, if we're able to move forward, we'd be looking to put the wells in the locations in the subdivision in mid-March, get data readings through June, and then begin the groundwater modeling over the summer. And then by August, plus or minus a month or so, we would have some preliminary data on sizing. The county has already looked at five different options. The option of putting in a drain pipe and conveying that water down to the creek to the south appears to be a viable option, but we don't have the engineering calculations to say what size that pipe should be and what amount of flow should be going through the pipe. And then we also have to check the elevations from the subdivision to the discharge point to make sure we have enough slope to get the flow through there. So I'd like to thank the residents of Metaview Estates for helping with our sump pump monitoring data, because if we're able to move forward and do a groundwater model, we can use this data, we'll spatially reference where the monitoring was taken place, and we could use that to calibrate and validate the groundwater model. So it's been essential to have the cooperation of the residents to provide us with this data, and it will go a long way to help make sure we're able to size the solution. At some point, if we get to the August, September timeframe where we can determine what that pipe size is, there's an opportunity then to perhaps turn that back over to the county to use county staff to potentially design and finish off some of the construction activities. So we're seeing this as kind of the next necessary step to get the engineering data to be able to come up with a final decision on what might be able to help solve the problem there.
So you mentioned at that point the county would then make the decision as to how to proceed, whether they could use the data to do the work in-house, or we would contract it out?
Because the five alternatives provided appear to be viable alternatives, it's just there's some engineering data that needs to be put together in order to be able to implement them.
Madam President, even if it's a county-run solution, and again, I believe the surveyor, highway, our engineer have been in talks about a potential resolution, pretty much a low-cost, low-tech solution, they're still going to know, need to know the sizing of the pipe, the amount of flow and everything else. And I think that's why we recommended that you call on Christopher Burke Engineering because of their experience in water, to know water flow issues and everything else. And we're going to need to know that, even if it is a county-operated solution, the amount of flow, how much that sponge is taking, and what kind of, what kind of flow rate will be needed to ultimately help drain it and provide some relief to the resident.
Mr. Wallace, once you get done with this study, you have the information to come up with what are the potential solutions. And if it's a solution that we can't take care of it in-house, will you come up with some suggestions as to where, how it can be accomplished and where the funding can come from?
Yes, there's a couple of different options, and we could be prepared to address that. We just want to kind of identify for the county the next step to be able to get to a point where we have the viable solution and would be able to start looking at how to finish it out.
I'm looking at this data, and I have to say, from a community perspective, this is pretty impressive, that we had citizens so interested in making this problem apparent, that they spent all this time. I mean, looking at pumps turning on every minute and a half, two minutes, four minutes, it's pretty stunning. So I thank you for the work that you've done, and I thank the citizens for spending that effort, making sure we had the data that can be used throughout the project. I know that there are members of the community that are here, so if anyone wants to speak about the project at this time, please feel free to come up and introduce yourselves.
Name is quick. Name is Jason Cho, 655 West Mill Drive. I think it's important to note that although there were only 11 of us that turned in data sheets, there are many more that are still pumping. There's probably 30 homes that are honestly pumping right now. It was just 11 data sheets turned in.
Right.
So it's not, it's not just a small group of us that are continually pumping at this time of year. There is a larger group, that's all I can say.
Thank you. So Mr. Wallace, you're saying 42 was the number you mentioned that are pumping?
Overall, looking at the historical records, there are 42 homes within the southern half of Metaview Estates that have experienced these excessive sump pump issues.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members of the community who would like to speak at this time? You can feel free to come up if you'd like to.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept this report, and I want to thank you for this report and forward it to, and given permission to approach the council to present the report for possible funding for the study.
I would support that. All those in favor of the motion to support this going to the county council for presentation and for possible funding signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Thank you, community.
One last request, if I can have my data sheet.
All right. There you go. Thank you. Thanks very much. Next on the agenda, let me see, what do we have? Under new business, consider engagement with the Sheriff's Association Recommended Council, Peter Wood, regarding department personnel procedures and training procedures. Sheriff Boyd?
Good evening. I'm here before you to ask approval of an agreement with Attorney Pete Wood, who's an employee of the Indiana State Police. He's actually the North Region Legal Counsel for them, lieutenant with them. He's also on the Indiana State Police Training Board, is actively involved in training. This is something that we've, each sheriff that I've ever worked with has had an agreement like this. A previous legal counsel passed away several years ago, and we transitioned to Pete Wood. So I've already sent the agreement to Mr. Friedman. He's reviewed it, and we're before you asking approval.
As the sheriff indicates, it's an existing agreement, but as the commissioners are aware, we're making sure that all contracts with any departments come before the commission at this point, since you're the only body granted authority under state law to fix a signature to a contract. So this would simply bring this contract in line with other contracts that we've had.
All right.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve this contract and engagement with the Sheriff's Association.
And I would support that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda, we have consider permission to approach the council for matching funds for Bridge Number 97, matching funds for Union Mills sidewalk project, renewal of county-wide construction inspection services.
And then we added two more to that.
Oh, that's...
The right-of-way grant approval for 150 north and the bid award on 1,000 north.
Great, thank you.
Well, I've got good news. Just last week, we were informed that the county received two grants. That's your first two items of that five or six. Roughly 1.3 million. 508,600 would go for sidewalks in Union Mills, and the 800,000 would go for bridge replacement, superstructure replacement on Bridge 97, which is along the Kinkie River. So those are first two items I would seek. And part of the application, last December, I went to council, and part of the application, I had to get a commitment letter for a 20% match, this 80/20 grant. And the 20% match was 200,000 for Bridge 97 and 127,150 for the Union Mills sidewalk project. So they've been very supportive, and as is you, as the commissioner, so that's all I have on that issue.
So do you need to...
I'm asking your permission to attend their meeting to formally get that 20% approved.
And if you could, separate motions on each of the items, too, so that we've got those to the record.
Okay. So first...
So first, I make a motion regarding approaching the council for matching funds for Bridge Number 97. I make a motion in support of that.
I would support that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved.
And the next motion is for matching funds for the Union Mills Sidewalk Project. I make a motion in support of that.
I would support that. All those in favor of the motion for matching funds for Union Mills, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion has been approved.
The next one, I make a motion for, in support of renewal of the countywide construction inspection services. On-call with Lochner, make a motion in support of that.
Yeah, that's just basically, over the last five years, we have an on-call inspection. Just a lot of our projects, we need inspector there, sometimes full-time, sometimes part-time. It's just to protect taxpayer money, to make sure we get what we pay for, essentially. And we might only use, it's up to, I think, $150,000 or $175,000, but maybe in one year, we only use $10,000. Maybe we use 50. It's on-call, depending on the need.
So Mitch, when you say on-call, are you the person that calls them, or does the engineer call them?
Yeah, the contract. It's basically any engineering projects where we might need construction services, inspection services provided.
Okay.
So if we feel, the county feels there's a need for that, we have someone on-call. Like, for instance, our 1,000 north, our paving we're due at community crossings, we need that.
Okay.
So I think the last two or three years, Lochner has provided those construction inspection services for those jobs.
Right. I know that they provided that last year when we were going through the whole paving, I won't call it a fiasco, but paving issues.
Yeah, right.
So, thank you.
Madam President, just so that we make clear for the record, because my firm has done work for HW Lochner in the past, we have always asked that special counsel review any proposed contractor addendum. We did the same thing with this. Mr. Hedges provided a letter, having reviewed the addendum, and says it's consistent with prior addendums approved by the commissioners.
Make a motion to approve.
I would support that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved.
Madam President, I make a motion in support of the R-Road Debutance Service Contract With DLZ For The Lothgren Road, 150 North, 250 East Intersection Safety Project.
And that's the next step in the process. This was also a federal grant, a federal highway via NDOT, improved intersection and safety project. It's pretty much an S-curve, I explained this earlier, but this is the next step in the process, and DLZ won that contract, myself, Jay, and Dr. Cora actually scored those. So that was the winner. I think there was three or four submissions. DLZ came on top.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I would support that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
And then we need two more, one for the right-of-way grant approval.
That's the same process, but this is between the county and NDOT. It's our grant agreement for this next step in the process.
For the 150 north.
For the right-of-way service.
Make a motion to approve.
I would support that. All those in favor of the motion to consider the right-of-way grant approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved.
And the last one on item 11B, you had a lot of them on that, is for 150, for the bid award on the 1,000 north.
Yeah, and I just put that.
Can we do that now?
No. We'll do that.
Okay.
I just put that document in front of you. It needs both your signature. You can see the pink tab, and that's for the bidding.
So you reviewed this, and your recommendation was to go with Reeve Riley?
Everything was final, the bid bond, everything was included. It was all good.
Yeah, we're going to want to make that up record. So everything was compliant, bid bond was included, and you're making a recommendation along with the other department heads. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. And Reeve Riley came on top. The second page of what I gave you with the pink tab on the bottom, that has to be signed.
By all three of us?
Well, two is fine. Two or three is fine. It does not have to be blue ink either.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation of Mr. Bishop, who after reviewing the bids, has made a recommendation to approve the Reeve Riley contract, and I make a motion in support of that.
I support that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has been approved.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think we covered everything on that one. Then 11C.
All right. Next on the agenda is considering the request of the MOU with Porter County and E-911. Mr. Alt?
I believe Mr. Alt could not be here tonight, but accepting the award in his behalf. We're going to say that we have gone through a couple of different drafts. Mr. Machado of my office has been in touch with Mr. Alt. We have looked at a good model as well, and so the latest version we have for you should be the final version of the MOU with Porter County and E-911.
So you're recommending adoption of this?
We are. It's, and perhaps you can give some additional explanation of why we've...
Well, I think it's important for the public to know what this is about. So the, oftentimes, in the emergency management services, there is an unspoken agreement. And what we're trying to do is make sure that there is an actual MOU between Porter County and the, Lepore County's E-911, so that when we do some technology upgrades, we will be able to switch to their system, and there won't be any downtime for our emergency response team. So rather than have just gentleman's agreement, et cetera, et cetera, we wanted to be sure that we fashion this after an MOU's that are done with, between other counties. And Mr. Alt has done a great job of shepherding this through the process. So with that, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion in support of the MOU.
I would second the request for an MOU between Porter County and Lepore County's E-911. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has been approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda, consider the request for the agreement with USI for the Otis Road Bridge Repair. Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening.
Good evening. Jason Sullivan, the county engineer. I'm here to ask for your approval for the contract for the right-of-way services agreement with USI Consulting for the Otis Road Bridge Repair.
Yes, we've had an opportunity to review it, and it's consistent with similar right-of-way agreements presented to the commission.
Make a motion to approve the agreement with USI.
I would support that agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. A motion, a request for agreement with USI has been approved. Thank you so much, Jay.
Now, next is this one.
Yes, right. So next on the agenda, 11E is Consider A Boundary Survey For The County Home And The Adjacent 5.39 Acres.
Yes, as the commission's aware, working with the council, which has been the council's strong desire, that we've moved forward and the commission moved forward in terms of auction of the county home and the adjacent 5.3 acres. We've got the legal description, the aerial description done, but as well with the auction coming up Monday, we would ask approval to move forward with the formal boundary survey that's required as well for prospective bidders.
I make a motion in support of doing the boundary survey.
I would support that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. A motion has been approved. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation to share with you. Dr. Cora?
Yeah, Madam President, this is to designate the week of February 24 through 28, 2020, as the Emergency Management Agency Week, whereas emergency management is a vital public service, and whereas the Lepore County Emergency Management Agency has evolved from civil defense, offering bomb shelter locations to our citizens, to homeland security, providing our citizens with emerging threats, and whereas the Lepore County Emergency Management Agency provides relief for those affected by tornadoes, floods, extreme weather events, as well as other natural and man-made disasters, and whereas the proper planning, training, and response facilitated by our team will lead our residents into a quicker recovery mode after a disaster, and whereas the Lepore County Emergency Management Agency is ready to provide planning and logistical information to other agencies in our county 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas Lepore County residents benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of our Lepore County Emergency Management Team by designating Emergency Management Agency Week, and therefore the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lepore, State of Indiana, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of February 24 through 28, 2020, as the Emergency Management Agency Week, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate activities. Madam President, I make a motion to adopt this proclamation.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, and I would second that. All those in favor of adopting the proclamation, honoring and remembering our Emergency Management Agency, their efforts and their mission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And I want to thank the emergency management team for all the wonderful work you do. Thank you very much.
I should have asked if you had any comments or anything you wanted to contribute.
No, I would just like to say thank you guys for allowing us to adopt this. That means a great deal to me. Fortunately, we, this year, so far, in the past few months, we have not had any devastating. Hopefully, we do not, and know that my office and myself is continuing to train to meet those expectations of that proclamation. And while I have the floor, I'd like for everyone in the room to be aware of our Rave Program, to go online, sign up for the Rave Program, because it is something that you're going to get valuable information from any event of an emergency, or just general information such as road closings and things like that. So go to leporcounty.org and look for the Rave tab, and please sign up. And once again, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
The Rave system, I have to say, when I get my, when my phone makes a little noise and I see a Rave announcement, it's really, really helpful. And I can't encourage, as honoring the week of Emergency Management Agency Week, we really need to encourage people. And if there's ways that we can do that through social media, through radio ads or whatever, it's a wonderful system for people who maybe not, aren't following social media, but they have a cell phone, and it's a great way to get information out about accidents, road closures, bad weather approaching. You know, we're coming into the springs, eventually spring will come, and that's oftentimes for heavy storms and tornadoes and things. So I think it's a, it's a good time to remind people, and maybe we could put some extra, extra push out on that.
Yes, we will.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Yep.
I think we have come to the end of the agenda.
It has been a long and fruitful meeting. Next on the agenda are commissioners' comments, which we hopefully will keep rather brief.
Madam President, just a few comments. First of all, there's so much concern about the coronavirus. So I've been in touch with our Health Department, and they have been in touch with the Indiana State Department of Health, and there are regular phone calls with the Indiana State Department of Health. To date, there have been no reports of any coronavirus infections in the state of Indiana. And if there is any suspicion of a coronavirus infection, usually those specimens are sent to the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, for testing. And so I don't think, people should be too worried unless they have been to China or been in contact with somebody who has been to China or in the, to the Far East. But I would take this opportunity to encourage everyone to take their flu shots, you know, even though as much as we worry about all these exotic diseases, every year, almost 12,000 people in our country die from flu. And so it's not too late to, and we have seen an increase in the flu, incidence of flu lately. I also wanted to thank you for attending this evening's opioid treatment program presentation. For those who are not here, and you'll be hearing more about it, we'll be having an opioid treatment program that'll be opening at the Swanson Center location in Lepore in mid-March. I think that's a service that is highly needed in our community, because there are so many families who have been suffering through this crisis, and I think that'll be helpful to our community. And lastly, we've met with, we have been following through on the lead issue, and we've met with the staff at the WIC facility in Michigan City yesterday, and they also do some lead screening. But all of them go to the state of Indiana, and then they are reported through our county health department. So the numbers are included in our county health department, so, and we'll continue to keep track of that and see what we can do to increase the awareness so that more and more moms can take their kids for lead screening at the appropriate time, and we'll continue to work with physicians and other healthcare providers and pediatricians to do that. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Around the coronavirus, is it true that washing your hands is the best thing that you can do to prevent, to prevent passage of germs?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so 20 seconds or 30 seconds of hand washing with soap, that's what the commissioners think, think you should do to reduce your chance of getting, passing along any kinds of infections. The opioid treatment center meeting this afternoon was really very rewarding to attend because it was a real great example of how when there's collaboration between people who, with good intent, great things can happen. So the discussion of the opioid crisis across our county has been talked about for a couple of years, and the idea came up, you know, how do we, how do we work on this? How do we, and together, between Porter County, Porter Stark Community Health Organization and Swanson Center, putting their heads together with the county council, with the county commissioners, and with the wonderful Lepore Healthcare Foundation.
Healthcare Foundation of Lepore.
You know, providing some oomph through financial support. We are on our way to really bringing support for our families who are suffering from this dreadful crisis. And so I think everyone will hear more about it, the releases will be coming forward, but I think today was a really great example of community collaboration across county lines and around a common, a common challenge. And so I think it's all good news. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was, I'm a social media fan, as some of you may know, and I've been watching those South Central girls. And I, every time they win, I just am so proud. And I have a bad angle, as some of you know, so I haven't been able to go to their games, but I follow them on social media. So I'm especially proud to talk about our South Central girls basketball team. They have been winning and winning and winning, and just really showing first-class sportsmanship and behavior. So on Saturday, they're playing at Logan's Port, and Logan's Port versus Frank, Frankton. And so a win in that, in that series of games will send our girls, South Central Girls Basketball, to the state's championship for, in Class Double-A, which is really a big accomplishment for, for those athletes. So I think we should all wish them good luck and, and Godspeed. They will represent Lepore County beautifully. So with that, I would conclude the meeting. Thank you so much.